Let's say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, tonight's gonna be kind of a unique meeting. We're gonna have a public hearing on the ordinance first, and we will take the public comment from that. And then after the public comment, the committee up here will debate, deliberate, and see what, if we want to, what we wanna do with it next. And then we will close the public hearing, and then we will go into our regular meeting, and then we will move on with the agenda there. The agenda, I have printed out, there's a mistake. I had, we voted on the ordinance in the public con, uh, public hearing. We need to move that down to the old business and the regular meeting. And that's where we will vote with what we wanna do with the ordinance for the public hearings. All right, saying that, we'll go ahead and start with the public comment for the hearing that we're having tonight on the wind energy systems. Ron, you want to?
Just one small clarification. Since they've been broken into two ordinances, I think it's important to clarify for everybody that the public hearing is on both ordinances. We're gonna run them concurrently since they're all on the same subject matter, so you can comment on either of the two as part of this public hearing.
Okay, three minutes limit. We'll go ahead and start. Who would like to start in the?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Is there support?
Support.
Move this second in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The agenda's been approved. All right, now we can start with the public comment. Anybody wants to start?
I will. Everybody's being shy, I'll start. Linda Reynolds, Douglas Township. Looking at the ordinance you guys are proposing with the 500-foot height, I do not like that at all. Our neighbors to the west of us and to the south are not even in that high of a ballpark. Last fall, when you had your other members on here, there was a vote on it. Cindy had 350, Rick had 350, Todd had 350, Tim had 400, Kevin had 120, and Jack, you had 500 to 600-foot height on it. Again, that's high. Then you look at your setbacks that you currently have now, with wetlands being at 600 feet, roads being one and a half feet.
Tip height.
Tip height. Our neighbors over in Pine, we're encroaching over on theirs. Theirs is much safer for their residents, and what you are doing is going to affect them. Not just us. You aren't looking at our health and safety, but our neighbors you aren't. I don't think that's right. And when you get talking to setbacks on the 150, or 1500 from the non-participating, you're not supposed to be looking at all this because you were told through Nordics and Vestas that, oh, that's only for safety, not to be taken out of context. It doesn't have anything to do with setbacks for anyone else. It's good enough for the safety of their workers, but not the community? I think that's just wrong. Found these on the internet too. Yep, the internet has information. This is an Apex project in Kansas, 2021. This one is out of Massachusetts. This was another one over there, 2021. It happens. There's dangers that happen with them. And I don't feel that you're controlling that part of it for us, protecting us. And then the ground clearance of 50, that's like you're putting on huge blades on there so you can get more wind. We're the only one in the whole county that has that low. The communications are having issues over in Greshit, Isabella. Some of them even in Montcom with their cell phones, their receptions, and they have a 30-day timeframe to deal with it. If you work from home, how's that work of your job? Sorry, guys, I can't work for 30 days because the turbines are interfering, and I'm waiting for them to correct it. And then there's a great little saying from Pine Township, Dan Main, "I just don't trust them." That's the...
You want next?
Kristy Williams, Douglas Township. Take example, if you guys would've paid attention to what's going on in Greshit County right now. I work over there. If you just pay attention, Fulton Township just denied the windmills ever coming into that township. And I am so glad that somebody finally stood up to the rest of them in Greshit County. They were all approved and everything, and then they finally decided they're not gonna allow them in there. So you might wanna consider that too, because people are starting to wake up and realize.
Anyone else?
Randy Bunty, Douglas Township. Some of this was set at an early board meeting, but because this is a PC meeting and relevant to the ordinance tonight, I'd love to revisit. A little wording from our current zoning manual. Section 501 states, "It is not intended for any use other than agricultural and low-density single-family housing. The purpose of this is to, quote, 'preserve the rural character of the area.'" Section 601B, "Low-density single-family use is intended to prohibit business, commercial, or industrial use of the land, and to prohibit any other use which would substantially interfere with development or continuation of single-family dwellings in the district." Some basic ordinances that have to be enforced are: You can't have an abandoned non-licensed vehicle in your yard. You can't have a swimming pool in your front yard. You can't use an abandoned mobile home as a storage barn. You can't attach one mobile home to another. You're allowed to have pets and livestock, but they can't create odor, dust, or noise that constitutes a nuisance to adjoining property. You can build any house you want, but must be aesthetically compatible and design and appearance with others in the vicinity. It says, "This is to preserve the land values of the surrounding area." If you apply for a special use permit, there are approval standards already in place. Some of them are, "You can own a gravel pit, but you can only operate it between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. on weekdays and should be closed on Sundays and holidays." You can have a salvage yard, but it must be enclosed in a six-foot-tall fence, and no salvage shall be stacked high enough where it is visibly visible by adjoining properties. If you live on M66, you can install a billboard, but it cannot be larger than 400 square foot and not exceed 25-foot tall. You can erect a tower, but you must demonstrate that it will not cause interference with common household radios and televisions. Outdoor lighting located on privately-owned property shall be so arranged that it will not shine directly on streets or occupied dwellings that are not located on the site. All of these ordinances have been put in place for decades to protect the citizens of Douglas Township. If we take the current zoning regulations and impose them on industrial wind turbines in this ordinance, my conclusion would be, they're not aesthetically pleasing, they're too tall, they're too loud, they will potentially run 24/7 and not take Sundays and holidays off. They interfere with internet and television reception. They do not uphold the rural character of the area. They do not protect land values. They do not promote low-density single-family housing. They are detrimental to citizens' health and well-being. Lights will flash over other people's properties. And there's no fence tall enough to make them not visible from adjoining properties. The only ordinance they can form to is they have low odor. But I know they kill a lot of birds, and I don't know how many dead birds would constitute a noxious odor. Nevertheless, with these industrial wind turbines being pushed on us by very wealthy corporations, some have lost their way and are completely disregarding everything generations have established to protect the township's health, safety, and welfare. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. My name's Pete Rillier, I'm living in Douglas Township on Hillman Road. And I'm in total agreement with that lady right there. It's all right, I know we talk about our own, uh, own rights on our property, but we gotta think about our neighbors also. Again, like, I can't have a big ol' rock concert in the middle of the night at my house because I gotta think about my neighbors. I can't have a junkyard, like she was saying, because I gotta think about my neighbors. Can't have a landfill, anything like that, because I gotta think about my neighbors. Now, I know it's your own property, you should have the right to do, but you gotta think about your neighbors. I mean, that's what, you're not on an island, we're in here together. And so, we're just plowing ahead with this, with Apex. If you look at Apex, I kinda look at, if you look at somebody, you first meet them, isn't it the first impression that you get from them that goes a long ways? I mean, if I meet a man, it's a firm handshake, it's a look in my eye, his body mannerism, his heart, his message, right? Well, this is not what I got from Apex. No, I didn't get a phone call, "Hey, Keith, we got a great deal for you." No. Did I get anybody come knocking on my door? No. Did I get any mail? No. Only after they were found out did I get a mail. So if it was so good for me, this is my first impression. They want my blank check of trust, which I'm out to give to every one of you. But I'm kinda like pulling that back, because if you do this at the very beginning, you go underneath the radar, start signing up people, and start causing division. Uh, that's the, we got great division. And I tell you what, folks, in this time, in this age, we need to be together out here in the country, because you see what's going on out in the city right now? We gotta be hunkering down together, not dividing like now. My brother-in-law is a petroleum engineer down in Texas, and he did a lot of research on these wind turbines. And he said that they could put one of these things on every inch, every available piece of land in America, and put solar right with it, and would not meet the consumers' needs in America. And he says, "Well, why is that?" Jeff, I asked him, he goes, "It's because of the technology, it's not there yet." Not that it won't get there. But these things, to look at these five, 600 things, they weigh out of character, guys. And the thing is, who are you working for? Are you working for us, or are you working for Apex?
Just a reminder, when the public comment, you're addressing the committee up here and not the audience, so who wants to be next?
I am. Well, the deal is with the audience...
Oh, you're done, you're three minutes to go.
I know, wait, wait, I know, you're asking 25 years, buddy.
Mr. Ross, sir?
If I'm going to work and pay the taxes...
You're done.
I put you right there, bud.
You're done.
You just countered Mr. Ross.
What was the matter, Douglas Township? I'm not sure who's doing all this, figuring out lakes and stuff. Lake Hemingway's missed. I live on a lake, probably about a 10-acre lake. It's big enough, I don't want a wind turbine 500 feet from it. The Flat River goes everywhere between this township. Does anybody ever think that a wind turbine 500 feet from the Flat River is going to ruin the ecology, the economy, the fish? Do we ever want anybody to come visit this township? Okay, I've been hurt, I had to have a surgery. Guess who showed up to clean my house and take care of my livestock and help me out with not one question asked or one payment wanted? My neighbors! How the heck do you expect to live in a community where everybody is divided because eight people up here decided that money was more important? We got rid of good, honest, perfect people that wanted to think of their neighbors and wanted their neighbors to come and help each other out. And you replaced them with people that don't even know me as a neighbor. I'm not really concerned about the fact that how ugly these are or how insufficient they are, or how un-green they are, or how many animals and stuff they kill. The division is absolutely ridiculous and terrible. Apex is not to be trusted, they are scams. You guys all complain about the lady who has six people or six kids on welfare with six different daddies? What do you think wind turbines, welfare? Who's paying for them? We all are! So if you guys all feel really good about being on welfare, go for it, but don't make me pay the price. I don't want them in here, I don't want them. They are a scam, there are seven, maybe six people in this county that will make money off of them. And I'm sure they aren't the ones that are gonna come and clean my house for me. They're the ones that are gonna move out of the township and leave it crap. Please, think about what you're doing to this township, I beg you. Because you have one chance, and once they're up, we don't have any choice to bring them back down. Once they're sitting there, dead and not running, because the world's gone on to something else in five years, or they've come up with a better green idea, or something that actually really works, it's too late.
Anyone else?
Eric Tester, Douglas Township. You know, the gentleman there was trying to explain something. It'd be nicer if we could find a way without just threatening our neighbors with throwing them out with the police. That I don't think is right. You know, there's things in life that are worth more than money. Your help, your family, excuse me, your friends. I've watched now, family members against each other. We have our neighbors, well, not rent, they're into their neighbors. We have friends that aren't speaking. If we take rural Douglas Township and turn it into industrial Douglas Township, we will have destroyed the community. What is the price of this community? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Harvey Schick, Douglas Township. I'm just kind of at a loss, you know, and there are some new board members up there that maybe aren't aware. Why would we entertain a new ordinance that is so much worse than an ordinance that was already referendum? And we were told to work something out to make it better for the community because they wanted the support of the citizens of the community. Why would we even get to this step to entertain it unless it wasn't based solely on greed? Thank you.
Anyone else?
I moved here seven years ago on a piece of... I'm sorry, Holly Hub, I'm from Douglas Township. I moved here seven years ago from Ohio to purchase a little farm in a quiet little community, and I loved it here. I love my neighbors, they're great, and thank goodness none of them want turbines. The point is, is if you're putting turbines on your property, I should not have to hear it, I should not have to see or experience any problems from it. I have rights to my property too. I pay my taxes, I mow my lawns, I take care of my property, I take care of my neighbors. I should not have to adjust because somebody three miles away from me decided they wanted $15,000 a year on a turbine. Why are their property rights fine? And most of them, let's be realistic, a lot of them that are going to be putting these turbines in don't even live on that property. They're not really gonna be inconvenienced. They're not gonna, they may plow it, they may plant on it, but they're not actually residing on it. Why should I reside in my area, in my house, and have somebody three miles away with their turbines disrupt the way I've lived here for seven years? And honestly, there are ways to bring in revenue to this community. We're talking about lower, you know, we're talking about needing more revenue? Grant writers. Clean up some of these properties, for goodness sakes. When you leave this township today, this hall, go four doors down this way or four doors down that way. For goodness sake, that was a Winnebago with a tree sitting on it. You can't even take care of that kind of stuff? And if there's a problem on one of these turbines, do you really think you're gonna be able to handle that? And I'm not being sarcastic, but I'm saying, open your eyes when you leave this hall today. Now, how are you going to deal when there are problems with these turbines? And once they go over from Apex to the electric company, you're not gonna be able to handle them. So we really need to sit down, maybe back off a little. All these other townships around here are making fairly good restrictive ordinances. What, you want them all coming here? And let's also ask, 75 right now, how many more later? Are we gonna have 200 or 300, which the other county has? I mean, in seven years, that place has gone from a couple of them that were kinda cute to, oh my gosh, it's ridiculous there. So that's my concern. I, as a resident, also have property rights. And I expect to be able to live on my property like I have when I made the contract with this community to move here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kelly Duffelson, Douglas Township. I'm gonna hand out some papers from up there in which a lot of the supporters I got here today, because they are there tonight at a meeting. I've heard about that, that the ordinance says we can't have cars, we can't have the junk cars, we can't have the smell, we can't have the noise of the animals. Then I guess if that's the way it is, then I guess, you know, we start with the board and we go door-to-door. Find out if the cows offend somebody, if the horses offend somebody, if the pot plant growing down the road there offend somebody. If you're gonna start nitpicking, then you need to start nitpicking with the board. This lady said that, um, the Winnebago with the tree. If, Pete, and I, as far as I'm concerned, as far as I realize, the ordinance says if you wanna sign a complaint, you sign a complaint. How many people have come to you and said, "I'm the one who put my name on that complaint" for an ordinance? Very few, because of the fact that what you hear is, "I won't put my name on it because I don't want people to know it's me complaining." And you know that as well as I do, that's a lot of the reason why people won't put their name on a complaint. They don't want their name out there. We've had complaints of dog barking. I know you've had, you've dealt with that for a long time. Dog barking over there by the lake. Well, I don't wanna put my name on the complaint because I don't want them to know it's me complaining. And somebody said a lot about the money that people with them on their property's gonna receive. And this tells you, the people with the turbines on their property will receive some money, yes, but so will the emergency services, so will the Sheriff's Department, so will the ISD, so will the Commissioner on Aging. And that'll tell you how much money they will receive. And that'll give you the read-through, I think it's pages 23, 24, and 25, tells you the breakdown per year on this. And that's per turbine, and that's the total of what the money that this township, that this county will receive from these turbines. And Ms. Linda said something about, she, I'm sure she showed pictures of, I'm gonna say fires or breakdowns of the wind turbines. Ask Alaska about the oil spill up there and the damage that caused to the ecological animals and the environment up there and how long it's lasted. Ask Texas about their problems that they have had with gas mains, oil rigs. Deep Water was a movie made upon an oil rig that caught on fire. And how many people died in that?
Time, Phil.
Thank you.
Kelly, it was their pictures, the warnings.
Anyone else? Yeah?
Hi, my name is Lynn Marks, and my husband, Tom Bush, and I are residents of, we're building a home here in Douglas Township. And that's why we're late, we just drove in from Grand Rapids, and it was a spectacular drive. When we got up into the rolling hills and the beautiful farms and the farmhouses, horses, cows, and fields, it was absolutely spectacular driving. The sun helped a lot. Our daughter is in wind energy in Texas, very much like the gentleman that just left. His brother is in petroleum. She works for BP, and they are doing sustainable energy. And she's on offshore wind, and she's having a ball with her job. I'm like, "Why are you having so much fun?" She said, "Because sustainable energy is the way to go, but offshore is the way to go." Land wind turbines are a thing of the past. She said, "The folks that work in land turbines are bold because it's not happening anymore. We're going offshore where no one's bothered by it." I'm like, "What about the environment?" She said, "It is hard on the environment when you land them in the seabed or when you float them, we don't have that technology yet." I said, "But what about the cost of going 35 miles out so nobody sees them?" She said, "It's very costly." She said, "But it's much better to be that far out because the wind's strong." She said, "On land, the wind is unpredictable, on land, the wind is unreliable, and it's an eyesore, it ruins the environment, so we don't do it anymore, except these smaller companies, we exploit the vulnerable components." Because that's where it lies. Thank you.
My name is Rick Harris, I, uh, Douglas Township. We have, my wife and I have a place on Clifford Lake. I happen to be a pilot, and I think you all should consider the setback from lakes which have airplanes coming and going. Maybe you know, maybe you don't. Clifford Lake was just recently named as an official sea port, so it's actually an airport. There are numerous airplanes that come and go from that, uh, from that lake, and there may be other lakes involved. I'm not, I don't have a flip plane, but I'm very familiar with them, and I know where they collide to the runway, and I know what their gradient climb is. And in order to climb out, you're gonna need two miles to get over 500 feet over a 500-foot tower. Two miles at least, that's for coming and going. And if you put a 500-foot windmill within a thousand, uh, a thousand, one mile of that lake, sooner or later, one pilot's gonna come in, forget where they are, and they're gonna hit it.
Kristy Gregor, Douglas Township. Back to our property values. I am curious when my property value decreases, because I can see a turbine within a mile. Is it the farmer, is it Apex, is it the PC? Who is liable for the decrease in my value? And who's going to compensate me for that when I'm ready to move? Have you guys thought about that? The mortgage companies for Fannie and Freddie, USDA, MISTDA? They're all asking. It comes right in their paperwork now. Is there a turbine within blah, blah, blah from your property along with the farms, the gas lines? All of it. If they're asking, they're gonna stop eventually lending to us. And if they can't lend to us based on our properties being within a certain mile of a turbine that's not commercial, technically it's an industrial turbine, based on the height and the wind and all of the stuff that you're putting in your debt. How are we even gonna mortgage? How are, how are the new construction loans gonna come in? Most of the people in our area need rural development. They need the MISTDAs, they need FHA lending. Who's covering that? Are you guys going to guarantee that every person who does not want to see a turbine is not going to lose our property value? Who's paying the difference? Is it you guys? Have you thought about it? Where is it in your paperwork? Have you discussed it with your attorneys? Have you done the research? I don't care anything about it when you guys are doing any of your discussions, nothing.
Well, first of all, for many of us...
Ben.
Ben Reynolds-Stanton. For many of us, if or when these turbines ever come into Douglas Township, we're gonna have to deal with those for the rest of our lives. And I really appreciate you giving me three minutes to talk about it, and heaven forbid I go over, because you're gonna call Johnny Law on me. The setbacks that you have in your ordinance there grossly inadequate. I've gotta believe that every single person here, pro or anti, somewhere in between, are concerned about safety and welfare of themselves and their neighbors. Some people are a little more willing to compromise on some of those safety issues, and I guess it would have to be up to them to look inside themselves and ask... And I guess it would have to be up to them to look inside themselves and ask why they're willing to compromise the safety of their neighbors, friends, family. Only they can answer that. You know this ordinance, as it's written, will probably be referendum. And there's a plan to fall back on a junk one if that one gets referendum. Why? There's a moratorium until August. You guys have got time to do this right. Listen to the people. Do it right. Instead of just trying to force-feed this, and if you don't like it, you gotta take this one. It makes no sense. You guys need to look inside yourselves and follow your moral compass and not worry about the love of money or the greed steering you in one direction. Follow the moral compass. Thank you.
Scott Carr, Clifford Lake, Douglas Township. As far as your wife's comment about nobody putting a name on it, I'd like to see a show of hands if everybody's gonna sign the petition if we don't get what we want. Yes, I am.
Anyone else?
And she's Douglas. Why don't you go ahead? She, I'm not Douglas.
And I'm proud of it. My name is Wendy Slaton. I live in Douglas Township. I came here about five years ago. I was born and raised in the city. And you guys just don't know how good you have it. I challenge you to go to the city, work, battle the traffic, battle the noise, battle the light pollution. Do it for a week, come back and tell me, yeah, this is worth it. You don't want commercialism here. You wanna be able to go outside, look at the sky. My first night here, I went, "What is all that?" My neighbors were laughing at me. They said, "Those are stars, Wendy." And I said, "Oh." Right, Catherine, we had nothing but light pollution. Now, I wanna ask you, what are you doing for, uh, the bird detection? I don't see it written in there. There was a big lawsuit just recently. Don't kill the eagles in this area. I saw an eagle for the first time in my life since I've moved here. I heard a loon for the first time in my life. I respect my neighbors. I live on a lake. Today, we had a tree cut down. Pretty big one, but it had a stress fracture, and it was either gonna come down on its own or we took it down. Excellent tree cutter. But we were very respectful of our neighbors.